Thank you for having us here today. I'm going to have to admit something upfront to you as I realized when I came running in the building that I had forgotten my computer and all of my remarks that I was going to make.[27.02][27.02](Laughter). So, I have painstakingly for three days worked on those so that I didn't forget anything here today. So, I apologize for that and I'm just going to wing it. So, bear with me here and luckily, I'm not going to be up here all the time. So, again, thank you today. We're here to update you on the Resort Advisory Commission 2021 activities. We're going to do that by each chairperson giving highlights from each of those committees. And these are the gentlemen that are chairs and vice chairs of the committees for the Resort Advisory Commission. I would like to just briefly read our mission statement and also to kind of read over some of the specifics that we have been tasked by City Council to accomplish. The Resort Advisory Commission is composed of up to 19 commissioners who've been appointed by yourselves. The general purpose of the commission is to review and make recommendations to City Council regarding projects and issues associated with the resort strategic growth area and such other resort and/or tourism-related projects and issues that City Council may refer to the commission. The commission's goal is to support City Council's efforts to realize its vision of Virginia Beach as a quality resort destination. And specifically after that, as part of our bylaws, it says the commission shall serve as City Council's Citizen Advisory Panel on Tourism Development Challenges and Opportunities. We should serve as an incubator for tourism development projects and programs and to serve as the conduit to Council for resort plans and initiatives. We are charged with monitoring the Tourism Investment Program, or TIP, and the Tourism Advertising Program, TAP, to ensure that expenditures are consistent with Council policy. Build consensus among diverse interests having a stake in our tourism industry and assist city staff and Council to integrate the diverse mix of resort programs and projects into a consistent unified tourism development plan. We're to be an advocate for quality design in both public and private resort development. And last, monitor implementation of Council endorsed resort projects, programs, and policies to ensure consistency with the Council's resort vision. So, that's what you've charged us to do and hopefully, we're going to show you all of that today when the chairpersons get up here. There are three things today that I really want to accomplish and one is to update you on the activities of what RAC is doing. The second is to recognize the chairs of the committees and all of the volunteers that they have working. We have an unbelievable brain trust that serves on these committees and they spend truly thousands of hours volunteering their own time in initiatives that's going to make our beach better. These are individuals that come from all walks of life, professionals, residents, you name it, we have them as part of the committees there. And I think that all too often, both our chairs and the volunteers that come and serve with RAC don't get the recognition that they deserve for all the work that they do. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize those individuals and what they've done. Last but not least is I want to emphasize to you guys, and hopefully, you'll receive this, that we are here to help you in whatever way that it is. If you have special issues that you want us to look at, if you have special projects, we serve at your pleasure and we look forward to receiving those special projects or initiatives. So, those are the three things that I really, at the end of the day-to-day, want to have accomplished here. I also, when I recognize the volunteers, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the city staff that we work with. On a daily basis, we work with Taylor, we work with Kathy Warren, Nancy Hellman, Lisa Bleakley, Robin Hart, and I can tell you that we would not be able to accomplish what we accomplish as a commission without the help and assistance of those individuals. So, again, I'd like to recognize all of that. So, without much further introduction here, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mike Mott, who is the chairperson of our Green Committee. And then subsequently, you're going to get a quick report from each of the chairpeople on that. So, Mike, you're up and you get to be the first one to use the clicker. They were worried about me and the clicker, I can tell you.[343.62][343.62](Laughter).
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Michael Mott. I'm the chair of the Green Committee. The Green Committee is an acronym for Green Resort Eco-friendly Efficient Neighborhoods. Our mission statement, the Green Committee is to foster green and sustainable initiatives in all aspects of Virginia Beach tourism and hospitality as we continue to thrive as a certified Virginia green destination for leisure and convention travelers. Thank you. Some of the highlights that we'd like to share from our efforts through the Green Committee are keep it beachy clean. So, this program is to keep our beaches and waterways beachy clean for all to enjoy now and in the future. An annual event happens every Earth Day to clean up at the oceanfront and this year, over 1,000 pounds of waste was collected in the resort area by over 400 volunteers. That's quite a large group of people who came to spend their time to help clean up the resort area. We also, the Urban Forestry Management Plan, we want to make sure that we're involved in the conversation during the update of the plan. We need to find a way to keep and expand upon our tree canopy that we currently have in the resort area. Offshore wind energy, we want to continue to support the offshore wind energy. Currently, we have two turbines out there, 27 miles offshore, with 176 more turbines over 112,000 acres between 2024 and 2026. And then, last but not least, our water quality update through the Virginia Health Department. It's mandated through the federal government that we have our water quality tested and it's something that we should all be really proud of, to know that Virginia Beach is one of the cleanest beaches on the East Coast. Only three out of 500 water quality tests came back with just above the threshold for higher-than-normal bacteria levels, although our water may not be the most crystal clear and see-through. We have one of the cleanest waters on the East Coast and that's something we should be really proud of. And up next to talk about our transportation will be Chuck Caton.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon. As you can see, I'm blessed to have 12 members of my committee that offer a broad array of expertise that are most relevant in dealing with the issues as we try to address transportation and safety issues within the resort area. Our committee basically engage on mobility matters within the resort area that range from parking to pedestrian to vehicle travel. And we also work very closely with the city staff and the different departments to endorse and support any transportation-related initiatives that they undertake that either directly or ancillary impact the resort area. During FY '21, we've provided support of letters to the city on several federal funding grant applications for both Laskin Road and the Virginia Beach Trail. And we've worked with city staff on pedestrian safety issues at some of the major intersections within the resort area. And then, we've also made a request to city staff to address the ongoing construction parking issue with developments within the resort area, requesting that a permit or that a parking plan, construction parking plan, be part of the city's site plan submittal process. Of course, we're also mindful of the transportation-related issues associated with Atlantic Park and so we've requested that city staff and city look into providing an interim parking plan for the Atlantic Park to replace the lost of dome parking site spaces during the construction. Most importantly, I think, though, this committee has been, over the last year, engaged in the development of the resort area mobility plan, which came out of the RACAP 2030 plan and working very closely with city staff and the project team in the development of that project, of that plan, and looking forward to implementing it in FY '22. The goal actually really going forward for this committee is to improve the mobility and safety for residents and visitors within the resort area for the future. And so, now, I'd like to turn it over to Randy Thompson, who chairs the Oceanfront Enhancement Committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Randy Thompson, currently the chair of Oceanfront Enhancement Committee and the vice chair of RAC. Without reading our mission statement in its entirety, I can shorten, give you the shortened version, is basically we're concerned with creating a positive experience for our visitors and locals and that can be through events, programs, aesthetics, and so forth. Sometimes, these, our initiatives are proactive in looking for new events and aesthetic improvements and so forth. Sometimes, it's a little preemptive in trying to prevent some negative experiences that are occurring. And I think you'll see that with some of the initiatives that we've taken on this year. First one you see up there is the Public Right-of-Way Code violations. This is where the retail merchants tend to continue to proliferate and their merchandising onto the sidewalk and gets into the right-of-way and creates some negative experiences for our guests. Our efforts in the past have led to having a zoning officer assigned to our new resort management office, which this past summer is the first summer we've had that and we feel like it's making improvements with multiple summonses have been issued and with the same retailer. So, it's, we think, having an effect, but we're also prepared to look at legislative issues to increase fines if that continues. Next thing you see up there is regulate busing. This is not to eliminate it, but to regulate it and to, particularly in terms of how the time and space and location that the busing is occurring so that we can ensure that the experience for the visitor is controlled to the extent that we can. We've worked with, spoke with Mr. Ingram and he's promised to get back to us first of the year with what we can legally do to make improvements there. Next slide, you see utility markings. This has been a forever problem. For as long as I've been on RAC, I've heard people complain about the utilities using permanent paint for their markings and it ends up leaving our resort looking like a crime scene. OEC has taken the initiative to just simply look and see what, how Norfolk was handling this, which they have code that prohibits it and it's working successfully for them. It's a very simple fix. It just, it needs to occur and both, I think, city staff and council have been made aware of that fix and that code. Next is projection art at the oceanfront. This has been an OEC initiative from the start, based on an art or project that currently, they exist in a lot of places, but where I saw it was in San Antonio. It's a magnificent attraction if you've ever had a chance to see it. If not, I would suggest Googling the San Antonio Saga and getting a firsthand experience of what could be at the oceanfront for a very small investment. We have put, had this, the initial cost of this has been in our ask for the next year's CIP. And lastly, you see the electric carts, fun, efficient, clean energy. OEC is currently active in evaluating and recommending electric carts as a public transportation experience for our guests and one that would add to our desired image as a clean energy capital of the East Coast. The timing of this couldn't be better. Currently, as we understand that there are bids for a pilot program next summer and we're excited to see that come to fruition. And next up is Billy Allman with Chair of PDRC.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Another acronym, PDRC, Planning Design Review Committee. It's made up of volunteers who are architects, professional engineers, landscape architects, interior designers, artists, and representatives from hotel, restaurant, and retail. This committee works tirelessly to offer advice and recommendations to people who are doing development at the resort. We've been working for years closely with the SGA Office, Planning and Resort Management, on issues that surface regarding zoning and design and variances to existing ordinances that may need to be considered based on the property requirements. Next slide. So, we are the gatekeeper of the Resort Outdoor Cafe Program and over the years, actually, several of the members actually wrote the cafe guidelines. They've been revised recently by staff, but over the years, that has really been a primary focus of our group. We've worked very hard to deal with issues like public bathrooms and showers and things that not everybody wants next to their business, but we review all the open space. We review the public realm, the streetscapes and the site design for major public and private projects. And I tell people, it's free. You can come into a room full of architects and engineers and get free advice. And so, sometimes, that entices people to actually come and be a part of that. So, we hope that all the future development will come our way in the future. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Gambrell, going to talk about the Oceanfront Strategic Growth Area Committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have the dubious honor of being the chair of the OSGAC Committee, which is an acronym also for Oceanfront Strategic Growth Area Committee. Our primary goal really is to help residents and business owners with strategic planning. We interview people that are interested in doing something with their businesses or starting businesses at the oceanfront. So, we start with meeting with them and then trying to encourage staff to help them with the different challenges they have. You'll notice we only have one slide for you today because we're really very, the newest of the committees, but the goal primarily really is to encourage people to follow the strategic plan that the city's adopted and help them with the different challenges they've had. Recently, we met with the owners of the bars at the block, we'll call them restaurants at the block, and tried to help understand the challenges that they have and trying to make our community a better place to be. And we've learned from them in particular and previous owners that lighting is so, so important. And we've learned some other things from different owners about the stormwater management, which I think they all had to talk about earlier this evening, the cost associated with doing new businesses and on smaller parcels and having to accommodate for stormwater management. The committee's goal is really to help people find a way to accomplish what they want to accomplish and let them know that they do have an advocate with the Resort Advisory Commission. And with that, that's about all I have to tell you today. I'm glad to be here. Thanks.
Lastly, the last committee we have is the Resort Investment Committee, otherwise known as RIC. We like our acronyms. I think that most of you are familiar with the stuff that we have accomplished through RIC. It basically serves as the executive committee for RAC and the members of RIC are comprised of all of the chairs, the vice chairs, and they each bring their own committee's resources and support forward to that. I would like to highlight for RIC the fact that during that time period, we had the RAC resolution, of which you guys very kindly voted unanimously to support. And we've had some real wins this year out of that resolution. First and foremost, we stood up the resort management office within six months of you guys voting to do that. That is a huge accolade and it certainly doesn't fall on my shoulders or our shoulders without mentioning the city staff that went to the mat in order to get that office stood up. By having the resort management office, they were able to centralize having our ambassador program, which improved both cleanliness and guest experience down at the oceanfront. We feel like there were bugs to be worked out and that's only going to continue to get better there. Also under that is the code enforcement, code and zoning enforcement. Again, there are bugs to be worked out. We're learning a lot of things about what we can do and what we can't do and probably testing Mr. Ingram a little bit and what we would like to do. But we have made progress in that and I think that it's a work in progress with that. So, additionally, that covers the entertainment program as well through the resort management office. We had a robust entertainment program this year and unfortunately, some of it was impacted by COVID, but our guests really enjoyed the experiences that we put forth on Live on Atlantic and the different free concerts that were had within the parks there. So, all of that was a result of you guys putting that office in place and we thank you. Lisa Bleakley, who is running that office now, is doing a great job and we look forward to continuing to work with her and I think that it will, you know, as time goes on, it will only improve with that. Second in line, and it kind of works with the resort management office, one of the things that with the resolution that we talked the most about was the concerns of safety at the oceanfront. We had really gotten to a critical point of people just, the perception that was not safe. We were feeling it and hearing it from our visitors. We were hearing it from our residents and had reached the tipping point as far as what we could do. And I can tell you that working with Chief Nutigate is just a marvelous experience. He is, he takes the time to listen and he and officers at the second precinct have really taken a proactive approach to how we are policing down at the oceanfront now. And if you take that strategy along with the new technologies that we have implemented that you had approved, it really is making a difference. And I can tell you personally that I have had visitors to Virginia Beach and business owners along Atlantic Avenue tell me there was a noticeable difference this year at the beach, which is exactly what we wanted to hear there. So, I think that that was a huge success on us being able to get that in place. The monitoring of the tip fund also falls under RIC. Mr. Kevin Chantelier keeps us updated with a beautiful spreadsheet that keeps us apprised of what's going on. I will tell you that there are conversations that will need to be had on the tip fund and its uses, but we need to do that at a later date because it would be time prohibitive to do that today. Last but not least, we participated with the help of the STUR Office in developing a strategic planning session. And there are two things of note that I really want to mention as part of that because you've heard a lot of the things that came out of that in the committee reports today. One is Atlantic Avenue reimagined. You've heard from Mr. Caton about the ramp study and we needed to complete that before we could move into Atlantic Avenue because we couldn't really know what we wanted to be when we grew up until we knew what space we had to work with, which the mobility study will help us define that, you know, how many lanes there are going to be, where the bike paths are going to be, where is walking more accessible, micro transit? How does that work within the dynamics of what's happening on Atlantic Avenue? So, we're near completion on that and we're really looking forward to the next step of reimagining Atlantic Avenue. What do we want it to look like? What can it look like? And getting into the creative parts of that. So, that was one of the main things that came out of the session. The other thing was to streamline communication with City Council and city staff. We wanted to make sure that you knew what we were doing. You know, it's, you get an annual report. Patrick gets an update from us, but we felt like it would be better to have more communication with you guys and certainly, more communication within the city departments. So, we put that as a goal and those are the two strategic goals that RIC will, to plan to accomplish over the next year. So, you'll go to... Yeah. It would be very remiss of me to stand up here and update you on RAC without mentioning our friend and colleague Preston Midget. He passed during that time period and I can tell you that the successes of RAC, he played a huge role in that. And we just wanted to take a minute to recognize Preston and his efforts within the Resort Advisory Commission and Virginia Beach as a whole. So, in conclusion today, I hope that we've given you a brief, because I was told to be brief, update on what's going on with RAC. Again, I would like to reiterate to you our desire to work to improve the resort area. That's what we're here for and anything that we can do that you guys want us to do, we welcome and thank you for all you've done to assist us in our efforts within the resort community. So, thank you. Any questions? There any questions? Mr. Balucci?
I'll defer to Mr. Tower and then I'll be happy to ask after that.
My first point was, Ms. Baumann, did you want to acknowledge Mr. Ronan? I didn't hear you do that. Maybe you did and I missed it.
Sorry, Mike. Mike is vice chair. So, I'm sorry that he didn't come up here.
He introduced me informally.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, and he is officially the clicker if you hadn't noticed because the rest of us are not capable of clicking.
The other comments I want to make are fairly personal, but if you, just indulge me for a time. I have the best job on City Council and a lot of the reason is because I represent the Beach District and I get to meet with these folks all the time. They are my friends, my family, my best supporters and I hope that I have returned that from time to time. But it really is, as a kid who grew up in another city, but who came to the beach, this beach, every summer for vacation, it is like having a backstage pass for life. I get to go and find, how do they do it? And believe me, it is an incredibly complicated machine. This is not Disney World. This is an urban beach where everybody, the private sector and multiple functions of various public sectors all interact in one place, all with one real purpose in mind, though, is for our residents and our visitors to enjoy the gift of the oceanfront in a safe and happy, clean, fun way. And it does not happen by accident. It happens because lots of people spend lots of time thinking and these are the folks who we're, the most, the luckiest thing is the people who care the most about the city. And I know, because I've lived here and I think, I understand, is, well, you know, that's all about the beach and the oceanfront gets a lot of attention. But, you know, when you look at what the investment in the oceanfront is from what it produces in terms of the city's hard dollars as well as our softer reputation for being a place where people want to live and play, it's an immeasurable benefit to the city. I think we all know that, even if there is competition within the city. But I come to the, came to the job having no idea, of course, I knew the beach. I live here, but OSGAC, PDRC, TTPC, what the hell are they talking about? I mean, it took me months to kind of figure out who the players were and every month, I continue to be amazed at how much people are willing to give of their own time, their own talent on behalf of our city. It's a great example of what volunteerism can do in the best way. So, I want to thank BJ. I want to thank all the gentlemen behind her, each of whom I have had the pleasure of getting to know and getting to work with, hopefully, for good purposes. They're tireless, selfless, dedicated folks and I appreciate everything you guys do and thank you for all your service to the beach.
Thank you, guys. Michael?
Thank you. Well, I would just like to also extend my gratitude to Ms. Baumann and to every member of RAC as well as the volunteers who serve on committees there. I first began working with RAC when I was a member of the Human Rights Commission and I've had the privilege to continue to work with RAC as a member of this body. When I was working with the Human Rights Commission and as a member of this body, I've been particularly struck by RAC's commitment to... been particularly struck by RAC's commitment to making sure that our resort is a place where everyone is welcome and is treated with dignity and respect while they're here and at work and when residents visit. And we do still have work to do, like every community does in that regard. But I would like to take note and also express my appreciation for RAC's commitment to that goal and to that virtue, and thank you for your work in that area. I'd also like to make a comment about the utility markings, which I made a note of here, which have been a source of frustration for me for many years. And if they're a source of frustration for me, then I know they must be a source of frustration for you. And maybe we can do a deeper dive into that policy question at a later date. But my recollection of that discussion was an inquiry that I made shortly after I became a member of this body, because I was frustrated, and anyone who's visited the resort or works at the resort would be able to reflect upon these really obscene and obnoxious markings that are all over the street and the sidewalks and the beautiful infrastructure that our city invests millions and millions of dollars in. And you can even see places that are brand new, even like murals and places that are created with brick. And these beautiful streetscapes are really littered with this spray paint all over the place. And my recollection was that we were told it was authorized by the Commonwealth and that we had no recourse. That's my recollection of the conversation, of the inquiry that I made years ago. And so I think what I heard today is that that may not be true. And if it's not true, then I would just like to express to this body and to each of you and to the public my interest in adopting an ordinance that would prohibit utility companies from making those obscene markings all over the infrastructure that our public invests millions and millions of dollars in, and that makes our city very beautiful, and these markings are very unsightly and inappropriate, really.
Right.
Thank you. That's music to our ears.
Well, I'd like to join you on that ordinance. I think you'll probably get a lot of sponsors on that. So I have had the distinction last week of being named a liaison to RAC, and I'm really looking forward to it. I have seen firsthand the hard work you all do, and I was reflecting on the past two years and what a roller coaster the resort has been on. 2020, very challenging, but we came out with the highest hotel occupancy in the country. I think it was about 60%. That's quite a distinction. And then '21, what a rebound year, and we got our tip and tap funds very healthy. So '22, we got to get to work on and make sure that we are more like '21 than '20, and I look forward to that. The ideas that you all bring to the table, you're like unpaid consultants that go out and see things and bring them back. I think that projection art that Randy mentioned is going to be a home run for us. Frankly, I'd like to see if we could accelerate that for this summer season, to tell you the truth. It was that dramatic to me to take a look at, and I might be discussing that with the council and staff a little later, once they get to know what it is, because it's a very minimal investment for a very major return on what we can provide for our citizens and the guests. But rest up, guys, because we got a lot of work to do coming up here soon, and I'm really looking forward to joining forces with you and getting some things done. Thank you very much for your service.
We're ready.
Ms. Henley?
Well, I would just like to echo everybody else saying, appreciate all the free work y'all do for us. And the thing I think that I was so strongly hit by was several months ago, when folks at the oceanfront came and said, "We need enforcement of our codes. We need to do some better things." And I really appreciate y'all doing that and coming from you folks far better than trying to come from us. But I would say, too, how pleasantly surprised I was to see the very first presentation here from the Green Resort that you all want to update the sustainability plan. I had no idea that was the top of your list for today, but a couple of weeks ago, I said to the council, "I want to bring some suggestions about the sustainability plan to you on December 7th," which I will, and I hope I can talk with you folks and we can work together on this.
Absolutely.
That's really in there, and we really appreciate all of the work that you do. So I'll be calling you.
Thank you.
So as a former liaison to the RAC, and I've admired the work, the hard work that everyone does to keep the resort going, and the only member of the council that actually lives in the resort, I get to truly appreciate every day what y'all do. So thank you for a beautiful report and sharing. And again, I apologize we were late today, but it was something for the resort.
And that's good.
Yes.
I just want to add that I may not live in the resort, as the vice mayor defines it, but I can see hotel signs from my front porch.
Well, I live right next door to one. In between them.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, all of you.
Okay, Mr. City Mayor.
Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, the next presentation will be provided by our finance director, Letitia Shelton. She'll give the interim financial update.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Wilson and city council members. I'm Letitia Shelton, the city's director of finance, here to present a snapshot of the city's interim finance report for October. General fund revenues through October are $159.9 million, or 13% of the budget, exceeding the prior year by $23.9 million, or 17.6%. The general fund expenditures are $488.2 million, or 36.7% of the budget. This is $31.8 million, or 7% greater than the prior year. The glide chart on the screen reflects a two-year average for the general fund actual revenues and expenses. As you can see, actual revenues, the blue line, are 13% through October, are tracking 1.4% higher than the two-year average of 11.6%. The actual expenditures of 36.7%, the green line, are tracking 3.9% lower than the two-year average of 40.6%. Real estate tax revenues are $6 million, which is 1% of the current year budget and is less than the prior year by $2.3 million. Just as a reminder, the first half of the real estate levy is due on December 5th of this year. Personal property tax revenues are $11 million, which is 9.2% of the current year's budget and is over the prior year by .8 million. General sales tax revenues are $23.7 million, which is 32.6% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year's budget by $3.2 million. Restaurant meal tax revenues are $20.2 million, which is 50.8% of the current year budget and exceeds the prior year by $8.2 million. Hotel room tax revenues are $6.7 million, which is 93.8% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by $2.4 million. Again, general fund expenditures are $488.2 million, of which total personnel costs through October is $143.7 million, or 31.9% of the total budget, total salary budget of $451 million. Personnel costs through October represents nine pay periods since July 1st, the start of our new fiscal period. We annually have 26 pay periods. Our external auditor, Cherry Beckett, will be here, are here currently finalizing this year's, I'm sorry, last year's annual finances. They will be making their report to the city auditors committee on December 9th, followed by coming to city council on Tuesday, December 14th. The next time you will see me will also be December 14th, when I will present the November financials to your body. And on a good note, as we enter into the enjoyable holiday season, the Government Finance Office Associations of the United States and Canada, GFOA, announced in October the award of certification, I'm sorry, certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting to the city of Virginia Beach for its annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending fiscal 2020. This certification of achievement, this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. With that, if you have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Moss?
I know we're pressed for time, so I'm not asking questions today, but I have submitted a extensive list of questions to the city finance department, which I know they will share with all the members on the body, but I just want to let you know I did have questions.
Thank you for both things, being brief and your questions.
We are working on those questions, sir, and you'll have them by the end of next week.
As I said in my note, they're not time-sensitive. Facts don't change. Don't ruin anyone's holiday. No one should be working extra. The facts are the facts, and they'll be the facts when they get here.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a safe and enjoyable holiday.
For a good report.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, it's my privilege and my honor to have Chief Nutigate come and introduce to you all the inaugural police cadet program and the members in this initial program.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor. Good afternoon, council. As we all know, this council has been very gracious in providing support and resources to the police department in many areas, but one that we're very proud to talk about today is in regards to recruiting, staffing, and retention. So even prior to my arrival, one of the things that the police department has been working on for a long time is to really develop that farm team so that we are recruiting and we're not suffering the issues that we have now. So we're very happy that within the last month, this council graciously allotted 20 spots for part-time cadets, and that has come to fruition. So for our first review, we were able to hire nine cadets, and we are putting them through the paces right now to try and really refine what that cadet program looks like so that we can get ready to start the second wave of recruiting. We want to get to that full 20-person complement, but it gives me great pleasure to ask Deputy Chief Wychendall to introduce what we think will be the future of this police department from that ground zero aspect as we move up through the cadet program into our academy and for the future of this organization. Shannon?
Good afternoon. So I do have the pleasure of introducing some of our cadets. Let me explain first off, our target group for our cadets is between the ages of 18 and 21. You'll see that Cadet Harris is 23, but there's a reason that he is in our cadet program. So to my left here, we have Cadet Pogue. To his right would be Cadet Gordon and then Cadet Harris. So Cadet Harris was supposed to go into our current academy, but due to an error, he wasn't able to, so we have him slated for the February academy. So rather than have him just wait without a job somewhere, we put him in the cadet program to keep him with us, keep him engaged. He's been doing a fantastic job out here. I'll let you ask him some questions in a minute. So he's been here for a little bit, over a month, with one other person that's set to go into the February academy. So we are excited about that. And the other two, Pogue and Gordon, as I said, they've been here literally a hot minute, so we hired them on the 11th, which was a holiday, so we introduced them to the city. City, welcome, and you have today off, and then we got them the next day. They have been here since the 12th, and they just got introduced to their commands. I know that although I haven't seen Cadet Harris, I did see Savannah today for quite a bit back and forth at the first precinct, keeping them busy. So without further ado, if you want to ask them some questions, please feel free to. I probably would ask Cadet Harris, who's been here a little over a month, how he's enjoyed the program more than the other two. I don't want to put him on the spot. Just have him here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Fantastic. Any questions you have for me in regards to the program? Would you like me to explain my experience so far?
Tell us about your experience.
All right. So as you mentioned before, I was supposed to be in class 71. We had a couple errors, and it was great to get a call and be like, "Hey, we're starting to start this cadet program. Would you be interested in being basically one of our first ones?" Of course, there was no way in the world that I would decline the opportunity to basically be at the forefront and learn how the department operates, how, you know, get a jumpstart on my career in law enforcement with the city of Virginia Beach as well. So we've had opportunities to take trainings, do some of the things with the academy, see how that goes, operate the cameras on the oceanfront, need officers in that way if they need it as well. So if they need help with which way did the vehicle go, I can go to that specific camera and figure out and try to help that way as well, at least at the second precinct. Savannah, at the first, it may be a little different. So depending on what precincts we go to, we'll have different tasks and things of that nature as well. But it's been great so far. There's not a moment where I don't look forward to coming to work. It's great. My command staff at the second precinct is awesome. Communication between officers and us and our commands have been phenomenal. This program has really been seemingly to be what it's supposed to be, especially in getting younger crowds like my colleagues behind me involved in law enforcement, because it starts with our younger crowds. That's how we're going to bridge the gap between law enforcement and community by getting us out there, getting us involved, and actually seeing what goes on behind, you know, behind the computer screen in real world. No more fingerprinting, social media. Get out there and see what it's like. So this program is definitely going to do that for us.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the only thing I'd like to say is I apologize that the chief got to you before the sheriff got to you, because we'd like to have you over there at the sheriff's office, for sure.
Don't listen to him. We like you right where you're at.
You've got to be quick when you deal with the chief.
That's right.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment.
Mr. Branch?
You know, we see these cities in the country that don't value their police officers in law enforcement, and these cities are becoming unlivable, basically. And I'm so proud of our law enforcement in this city and our reputation as one of the safest cities in the country, and I commend you all for stepping up to be the next generation to hold that reputation for us. And I want to thank you so much for getting on board, and what a great program, chief. Thank you so much.
Mr. Moss?
I just want to say, your first job and task is to recruit two more people.
And Councilman Moss, I know you're going to ask, we are still working on the skilled bridge program that MOU is being finalized. Hopefully, we'll have it back from the Navy. I don't know if anyone knows anyone at the Navy that maybe could make a call and see where they...
I do know someone. We'll chat. I do know two people, in fact.
So if we could get that back from the Navy, we would like to move forward that. And once again, just thank you to the council for your commitment to this police department. It is noticed and it is appreciated, and thank you very much.
If you're not safe, if our citizens don't feel safe, they don't have anything. So public safety is really number one, and we thank you and the young people that have stepped forward for this program. And to you, chief, you have brought so many innovative ideas to us, and we really, really appreciate you and this great... Go out and do great things, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kathy Warren from the Strategic Growth Office is going to give an update on the 35th Street public parking project.
Welcome, Kathy.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. So today, we're excited to bring to you a briefing for an opportunity to add some public parking in the resort area, specifically in the northern area of the resort. Without going through all of the disclosures, I'll let you read these, but Suburban Capital is the developer we are working with on this project, and they own the land. To give you some background, in the red boundary there, you'll see where the new Hyatt Place Hotel is being developed on the former Belvedere Hotel site. And then the yellow boundary there, you'll see where they own a surface parking lot that we are working with them to develop a parking garage on that site. This is just a closer vision of that site. This is the new Hyatt Place Hotel that's being developed at 36th Street. It has 140 rooms. This picture was taken last week. They are on target to complete the hotel by May of 2022. Oh, I thought someone said, "Excuse me." So this slide here just shows you the city's existing parking assets in the resort area. We have five lots, three garages, and several on-street metered spaces for just under 3,000 public spaces. All of these spaces, it is important to note that they are all located south of 31st Street. Street. This slide here just shows that the average turnover in the resort for our metered spaces is at 2.8. The spaces in the area specifically located 35th to 37th Street have a turnover rate of seven, which means this is a heavily utilized area. Our capital needs for our garages are addressed through the Oceanfront Parking Facilities and Capital Maintenance CIP, which currently has a balance of $2 million and is funded through the Parking Enterprise Fund. Shown here also are the 2019 revenues for our three garages, which range from $89,000 to $411,000. On this slide, you'll see that we are projecting revenues and expenses for 200 parking, public parking spaces, in a new garage at the oceanfront at approximately $143,000 net revenue by year five. Employee parking is a constant concern in the resort area, so we did want to point out that Suburban Capital will build an additional 14 spaces for the 19 employees that they will have working per shift in the garage. And their offices are, Suburban Capital's offices are located two blocks away, and they have surface parking there that they will also make available for their employees. So the proposal would be for this six-story, 354-space garage, that all expenses are allocated on a per-base calculation. And what that means is that for a total of 200 public spaces, the construction costs for the city would be $23,900 per space, or 4.78 million. In addition to that, the land costs would be $9,887 per space, or 1.98 million, for a total city investment of $6.76 million. We did want to point out that in support of this proposal are two items. You heard about the Resort Area Mobility Plan earlier with the RAC representatives, but we are hoping to wrap this plan up by early 2022. And also the 2013 Kimley Horn Resort Parking Strategy. Both of these plans recommend the development and dispersal of public parking throughout the resort area to address the need for public parking at the oceanfront. So our next steps would be that if council would like to move forward with this proposal, a public hearing and vote to appropriate $7 million to the VBDA at your next meeting, December 7th. And if that moves forward, VBDA will move forward with the developer to finalize the deal, and we will move forward with that. It is important to note that there's $11.125 million sitting in the resort parking CIP for this purpose, and with that, I'll take questions.
Very good. Questions? John?
Is the $11.25 million cash, or is that allocation of debt?
It's an appropriation that's existing from the TIP fund?
Yes, but I understand you can have appropriation that's being financed later by debt. I'm asking if it's cash or is it debt? There's a difference.
If I may, council member, since our budget director's not here, that's not a question we can answer from the president. I can tell you it is fully appropriated, but I cannot tell you how it would ultimately be funded downstream if that would stand purely as cash.
Well, that's a question I hadn't previously asked, but this thing stimulated asking, because I think it is important.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, is that top line meaning a public hearing, and we're voting on the same night of the public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
It can be structured that way. It can also be structured where there's a public hearing on the 7th and a vote on the 14th.
Or even later. Okay.
Or even later.
The other question I had is, you said this is a condominium in my notes, which didn't get explained here on the land acquisition. Does that mean that we are owning 56.49% of the land?
Yes.
And so we are paying in total how much for basically 56% of 66 acres, so maybe a third of an acre, a little bit more than that? How much are we paying in aggregate?
So in aggregate, for the land cost, 1.98 million. The total value of the land is 3.5 million. Our portion would be 1.98 million, which is $9,887 per space, and the developers' portion is 1.5 million.
And what is the real estate tax assessment of that property?
I would have to get that for you, sir.
I would like to have that too, the taxable assessment. I'd like to know the difference between what they say is the market value and lost revenue, because our estimates are low.
Sure.
The other question I ask is, I assume since this is creating for turn, because you mentioned high turns, does that mean that we will not be permitting leases of these spaces so that we make sure that we, other people are buying leases up? You know, this is right on close, so one of the conditions of this is that we're not going to be leasing out on a monthly basis these parking spaces such that they really are available to the public for the quick turns that you talked about? Or is this going to be like other parking garages where people are leasing spaces on a monthly basis? I'm just trying to put your turn rate and our conditions, do they align?
I understand, and we can make that as a stipulation as part of this deal.
But okay, I would suggest to my colleagues that in light of we're trying to open up the beach, that we don't want people that, other places leasing spaces, and we don't, then we still don't have, the turn rate doesn't come down because the spaces are locked up. So I would certainly, that's just to my colleagues to share that, and I think that the debt answer is key. And who are the principals of Suburban, Inc., just for the purposes of conflict disclosure? Who are those principals?
Mr. Tim Stifler, Mr. Chris Perry, and a Mr. Marcus, and I'd have to get his last name for you.
Okay, that'd be great, just so we, so you know who the players are when you don't know if you have a conflict, if you don't know who the people are. I got the other answers to my questions here, and I'll have more to say later, but those are the things that I didn't ask earlier, and I appreciate your prompt reply. As always, you are well informed. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Tower?
Thank you. Ms. Warren, you may have explained this in a letter, I just didn't get to finish it. Tell me, explain to me what the connection with the VBDA is and this project, how that works.
So typically, the way our parking structures work, they are all but one owned by the VBDA, so we wanted to keep this consistent with our former policies.
Okay, so, and the reason we do that is, other than consistency, why did we do it originally? What's the, I just was intrigued by Mr. Moss's original question, why do we do this? I wanted, I just kind of wanted to get an education.
Just for lack of a better answer, it's the way we've always done it, but it certainly doesn't have to be. And also, while I'm here to, I just conferred with the City Attorney's Office, PFRB is the contemplated source of funding for that portion of the CIP.
So it is debt financed?
Yes, sir.
So the total cost is not now given, it's actually debt plus interest? I'd like to know what the total cost is, because that's what we really pay.
We'll get that for you, yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, that kind of raises another question, which may not be fair to ask, why do we not ask that question on every single appointment about?
Oh, I do.
How it is. Yeah, well, I'm just saying, maybe if it's that, I mean, at whose discretion are we deciding whether a particular project's going to be debt? And at some point, I assume Mr. Chadelair and his crack staff tell us the best way to do it for the city. I mean, are we, or is that something that is normally a council looks at in a methodical way, or only when Mr. Moss brings it to our attention?
Can I reply?
Yes.
I think it should be a methodical, often I bring it up for this reason, because in the end, if you're accelerating when you exercise that debt versus when the CIP planned to exercise it, it does affect where you're at on that per capita debt and all your debt measures. And if you remember from the five-year forecast, we have some places where we're very close. So then you have to think about your most limiting theory of constraints, if you're familiar with that. The most limiting factor is now debt capacity, and so therefore, it becomes very important that you understand all the little things that are still out there, and are you running against the top line or not? And so it is, in fact, I've mentioned many times, that when people come up here to fully disclose issues, you really have to understand all the pieces and so that we don't have to ask the questions. But the material, we didn't get a brief in advance, as you know, we just got a memo, so we couldn't study the issues. I didn't get a brief on this in advance.
Well, we had it in closed session.
We briefed twice in closed session.
Well, I don't recall all these details in the closed session, maybe they were there. Maybe I couldn't see it at the time, I don't know, but I don't recall seeing it. But, and if I did, my regrets, my apologies, but I still didn't get one with the package to look at and study, so I get my questions. But the point being is, that's why I ask, because debt now is the most limiting constraint on our how we proceed relative to our bond rating.
Okay.
Mr. Branch?
Go ahead, Mr. Tower.
I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. Moss, for that explanation, and I'm interested in pursuing it further, maybe not tonight, but in how we absorb this, because it does seem to me, I mean, it's not this project or any given one, it's kind of a methodology of how we do business, and it sounds like we ought to look at it some more, and I appreciate your response. On the turn rate and how we're going to do these, that, on the other hand, seems to me something that city council, we've got a parking czar, we've got a parking authority, we've got a parking department, whatever it's called. I mean, I assume they are looking at stuff like this. When they decide, okay, what's best? Are we going to rent this, lease this space out, or are we going to have it available for turn, that they have got some type of semi-sophisticated way of analyzing that to say, you know what, doesn't make sense to put this into a lease, we can make more money turning this, and that they are doing that, and we can count on them doing that. Am I right about that?
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Okay.
Mr. Branch?
Thank you. Well, I just want to commend the staff for bringing this to the council. This has been an idea that's been discussed for many years, partnering with the private sector as they develop their parking for their businesses, that we could add public parking to the mix. And while this parking lot will be for the public, I really think we need to take a good look at overall parking issues at the oceanfront. Parking is going to be the key for redevelopment, and these hotels that are on the oceanfront, as they redevelop, if they can get the parking away, you're going to get a much better product and better revenue and better aesthetics if we can create more garages away from the oceanfront hotels. So this is a great start, and I hope it's just the beginning of more of these type of projects.
And if I, I'd like to add something to the point of whether we lease some of the spaces out or not. If our parking folks could come back and, because sometimes these spaces are not always used, they said they're empty. So sometimes leasing these spaces out brings in more revenue. So maybe we look at a certain portion of them to be leased out rather than totally just sitting there vacant. So if we can get some kind of analysis back on these spaces, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yes, John?
We do not have a parking authority. Disconsciously, we chose not to have one. I think it's not inappropriate for this council to say that though there may be inefficiencies, the fact that we want the public to know that all those spaces for the public are available to the public is a value decision. It's not a dollar and cents decision in this particular case, because it's a commodity, and maybe we might want to express our intent, and because we have been talking about, you know, acquiring more open space at the oceanfront, making the oceanfront more accessible to the residents who live in the heartland, and one of the things you do, since we have other lots, is especially when it's so close to the beach, is to make sure that it is open all the time, though it might have a lose money, but the point of it is, we are trying to convince the public that we want them to come, and they have an equity stake, and this might be a small optic, might cost you some money, but it may be, you know, from a branding point of view, I might add, you might find out it has a great goodwill value that overcomes maybe leasing it. I just offer that as a perspective from people who I get comments from elsewhere in the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council at this time, our aquarium's director is going to come and give an update on our, on a proposed use for the shuttered venues grant.
Thank you, Mr. Duhany. Madam Vice Mayor, members of city council, as Mr. Duhany said, I'm Cynthia Spinolis, I'm the director of the Virginia Aquarium, and I'm delighted to be here today. I always like to remind city council before I begin that we have an important nonprofit partner, and I'm joined today by Chair of our nonprofit Aquarium Foundation, Sal DeBarro, and Officer Tom McNicholas. While the monies we're discussing today all belong to the city, I am so grateful for the support of this nonprofit organization, as I know you are. So I have great news today. If I can switch the slide.
Oh, is it not working? You need a clicker operator?
I think he left.
I apologize.
BJ said she needed a clicker operator.
I'll do it for you. Oh, thank you. Thanks, Amanda. Well, I have great news for you today.
We have it. That's fine.
All right. Ah, there we go. Thank you. I apologize. I'm here to share with you the Shuttered Venues Grant. This grant was established by the American Rescue Plan Act and administered by the Small Business Administration. The Shuttered Venues Grant was established to assist entertainment and museum venues that were significantly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Applicants for this grant were eligible to receive 45% of our gross 2019 revenues with a maximum grant of $10 million, and we received notice that the grant was approved in the amount of $4,486,715.06. The department would like to establish a new capital improvements program fund to utilize these funds for replacement, repairs, renovations, and/or modifications to animal holding buildings and exhibits at our three city-owned facilities and for our future expansion feasibility studies. I'll point out that there is no local match, and the department has met the criteria for the expenditures in the amount of $4,486,715.06 in our FY '20 operating budget. So if approved by you at your December 14th meeting, I've outlined here how we plan to utilize the monies. Animal holding facility replacement, SCADA and other life support upgrades to address valued engineer items at the Darden Marine Animal Conservation Center, and finally, three studies for our future expansion. But let me share the specifics. Please let me provide some background first. Our south building construction continues to progress, and we hope to be open to the public this spring. And I want to thank each council member that has taken a tour, and I want to offer to each of you that have not, please contact me if you're interested for a construction tour. As a background, the south building project started in the 2013 CIP. 10 years later, we will open the building. I've taken some recent photos here for your reference, and one highlight of the new building is our new outdoor 300-sea amphitheater area where we plan to host animal programs. If you've ever been to Busch Gardens or another zoo or an aquarium, I can see nods, you're familiar with these animal programs, where we bring out a keeper and we're able to showcase animals and discuss many of their behaviors. These program animals require a holding area for them to be housed. One of the areas of the funds for the Shuttered Venues Grant will support the replacement of our current Patterson Animal Holding Building with a new building. The current Patterson Animal Care Building is shown here on this slide. The building, a Quonset building, is a prefab metal building that is long past its usable lifespan, and it was never designed to house animals and cannot accommodate non-native animals. The bulk of the grant monies would be used to raise the current structure and construct a new building on this site, and the current building is 1,200 square feet with an 800-square-foot outdoor area, and our new building would be 3,500 square feet. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ari. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ari.
Hello.
Ari is our one-winged red-tailed hawk.
Oh.
Ari currently lives in this building and will be part of our programming when we reopen to the public. With the construction of a new building, it's our hope that we can have animals like Ari be housed in this building, and we can do many, many animal programs. Let me tell you a little bit about Ari. Ari is a red-tailed hawk, and she makes the perfect program animal, since they are the most common type of hawk to North America. And these animals make great ambassadors, because you can see up close her talons and her beautiful camouflage plumeage. This is Carrie Anne, by the way, her keeper. So while you enjoy seeing Ari, and she's going to go back home here, I'm going to share a few more photos of the building. Thank you, Carrie Anne. All right. $390,000 of the shuttered venues grant will support various upgrades and improvements to the aquarium's life support systems. This includes replacement of our legacy systems. Life support, for those of you who are unfamiliar, is the lifeblood of an aquarium. This includes pumps, filtrations, and allows us to provide a healthy environment for our animals. I'll share a few pictures of some of our life support systems here, some sad pictures. The picture here in the photo is of the new Darden Marine Animal Conservation Center. This building opened this past fall and currently houses our quarantine, our stranded animals, and the necropsy areas for the Virginia Aquarium. The initial low bid for the construction was much higher than our appropriated funds, and many items were value engineered out of the project to bring the costs down. Although these items were eliminated from the project, there are very important components for the operations of this building. First, exterior storage. This is necessary for us to store various items and pieces of equipment that we use when we respond to strandings. A loading dock canopy will provide protection and extension of many of our equipment lifespans and items that are stored on our loading dock. Mezzanine access. Pictured here, you can see access to our life support systems is on the second floor, and it's accessed by a ladder. Frankly, this access is simply unsafe, and we need to add stairs. So we plan to use $430,000 of the grant to address these items. And finally, I opened with the south building renovation and expansion pictures. Of course, with the aquarium's main building being 35 years old, we began planning a few years ago on how we could renovate this building. The picture here shows an artist's rendering of what the building could look like, and the picture also appears on the resort area master plan that you adopted in June of 2020. In short, renovating our seals, sharks, and turtle habitats will require a massive undertaking. This plan allows for these animals to be moved to new spaces, and their existing habitats to be renovated, and allows us to have new and exciting exhibits in their place. This is a huge undertaking, since saltwater, concrete, and steel do not coexist forever. As a first step in the process, we'd like to do three studies in sequence over the next year and a half. First is a feasibility study. How much will this project cost in both capital and operating costs? And how much direct revenue will it produce? Second, how much can our nonprofit foundation fundraise for this project? And this will be an in-depth study of the availability of private donor dollars. And finally, we need to know how the current aquarium building, which we know currently generates $265 million each year to the Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads community, how much impact will this new building have on our year-round tourist dollars? So here's a summary of actions, and actually, it will be at your December 14th meeting, I apologize, it says December 7th, of actions for you to accept the grant and then appropriate it into a new CIP, as well as appropriate $165,000 for those studies. So with that, my staff and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Michael?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to take a moment to share with my colleagues and with the body that I had a chance just yesterday to visit the aquarium, as well as the Darden Marine Animal Conservation Center. And I was really blown away by what I saw, and in particular, the level of sophistication about animal research, marine animal research, and marine animal conservation. It was incredibly impressive. And I think that because that's an operation that isn't open to the public because of the nature of the work that you do, I think many people don't realize how impactful that work is, and also how important that work is for scientific research about how we can, you know, continue to preserve those species and make sure that our environment is thriving. So I just want to thank, I see that Mr. Swingle is here, and I want to thank him for his many decades of service to our community and to our environment. And also, representatives from the foundation are here as well, who generously support that operation. And I think it's a worthy investment for this council and for this body to continue to support that mission. So I'll be delighted to support your request, and also look forward to future opportunities to support your mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I just want to compliment your personal leadership.
Oh, thank you, John.
I had no doubt that when you came to that job, that we would just see a whole new approach. And you have not been disappointed at the least, and Walt Disney would be proud.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I will first say, it starts at the top, so thank you all for your leadership, my board's leadership, of course, Mr. Duhany and Dr. Chandler. I couldn't do it without them. And finally, my team is everything. I'm joined by my team here, the most passionate people in the world. Mark Swingle, he mentioned 40 years with the City of Virginia Beach, passionate. I could call each of them at 2:00 a.m. and say, be at the aquarium in 15 minutes, and they'd drive to the aquarium in 15 minutes. It's just the most dedicated staff. So thank you, and thank you for your leadership.
Well, I'd like to say this is an amazing opportunity that's been given to us, and thank the foundation, the volunteers, your staff, and you, Cynthia, for your passion. And my late husband, Tom, absolutely loved the aquarium. That was one of his favorite things. And my good friend, Sal, knows it very well, how much Tom loved the aquarium.
Thank you.
So thank you, and this will be an exciting thing to vote on. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council at this time, our planning department will come
We didn't have a short meeting.
Oh, it's been so long.
That was well worth it. That was good.
Hi, welcome.
Well, hello. Good afternoon, or evening, I suppose.
Almost.
So Bobby Tahan and I are here, and we will give you a quick overview of the planning items scheduled for December. And it's just hard to believe it's December. Thank you. So there are eight land use applications for the December 7th meeting. There's also an amendment to the comprehensive plan as a result of the passage of the stormwater bond referendum. And then also, you have an appeal of the decision of the Historical Review Board for the NIMCO United Methodist Church. Item one, you have seen several times, excuse me, let me catch up, here you go. You have seen this several times, and most recently, it was deferred on November 9th. So Economic Development is happy to let you know that, moving forward, there are no issues with the contract purchaser under the provision of a 75-foot buffer from both general booth boulevard as well as adjacent to residential properties. So I think finally, city council can feel comfortable moving on without any hiccups on our end. So thank you for your patience with that one. Located in the Hilltop SGA, item number two is a request of the Friends School that has existed on this 11-acre site since 1956. And item number two is also coupled with item number three. Item number three is a request to remove 6.63 acres from the boundaries related to the conditional use permit for that private school. And the Friends School, they are proposing to provide some additional amenities and improvements on their property, that include the expansion of an existing administration building, the construction of an outdoor stage, outdoor classrooms, and then also an outdoor shaded art patio. Modular classrooms will be used in the interim during construction phases, and that will lessen the disruption of the school's activities. As this site is zoned commercial and the property that they sold is zoned apartment district, the school now finds itself having to install a barrier between those two zonings. And that requirement is 15 feet in width. And what they are proposing is a combination of a fence, as well as a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer. The staff and the planning commission are supportive to that deviation, and there is no known opposition. And then, as I mentioned, item number three is simply to remove a little more than six and a half acres from that private school conditional use permit. And the applicant here will be developing these, this property, under the provisions of the existing zoning of A18 Apartment District. Item number four is an application for a conditional rezoning of an almost two-acre site located at the Hilltop SGA. Proposed is a complete renovation of the property that will include a new restaurant with indoor virtual golf simulators. So while the restaurant use is permitted, and a restaurant has existed on this site likely for some decades, it's the indoor recreation component that is necessitating the rezoning to a B2 district. The indoor space where the virtual golf games will be accommodated are below the threshold for a conditional use permit. So the threshold is 7,500 square feet, and the area for the golf simulators will be just about 4,000 square feet. There's an existing substantial six-foot-tall berm that will continue to remain and has really served to be a great screen and buffer from this commercial property to the residential community to the east. And there is no known opposition with this request, however. Planning Commission, while they did vote eight to two to recommend approval, they have requested staff inform you that they are in favor of removing that non-conforming sign. So while they did recommend approval, they didn't want to hold up this process in trying to work that out with the applicant ahead of time, but they wanted to be sure that we mentioned their preferences for that large sign to be replaced with a conforming sign.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I think when we adopted that sign ordinance back in the 86-90 timeframe, if you did so much development on a parcel, it was a dollar value or something, renovation was going on, then I thought the sign had to then be brought into compliance. And then, because the reason why I know that, they did a big renovation on a McDonald's near where I lived, and they went to the BZA and got a variance to keep the non-conforming sign when they replaced the building. But I do believe that is the requirement, but maybe someone could remind me if that's correct or not.
So our policy is that we always take the opportunity to bring a site up into compliance, whether it be with a sign or plantings and so on. So this is a typical request that staff recommended to the planning commission that the sign be removed and replaced. So they did agree, but they didn't want to deny it based on the sign.
Could I ask a question? What, the two negative votes on the commission, do they, I have not had an opportunity to look at the...
So they were an emphasis that the sign should not remain in that same size.
Same issue they had, they just weren't...
They weren't comfortable pushing the green button. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
It's a good question. So item number five is a request for a tattoo parlor along Newtown Road. We can't have a meeting without a tattoo parlor, it seems. But this one is specifically for the application of permanent makeup known as microblading. Parking can be easily accommodated on-site, no changes to the building are proposed, and the microblading services will be provided by appointment only within the existing barber shop. So there is no known opposition, and this was a consent agenda item for the planning commission. Item number six is a request for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and service on a 3.22-acre parcel in the Rosemont SGA. The proposal is actually an expansion of the existing dealership that operates on the site adjacent to the east. It was formerly known as Driver's World, and it's now operated by Checkered Flag. In 1997, this site was actually designated as a parking area under that 1997 use permit for the Driver's World. However, it has since been removed from the boundaries of that conditional use permit. Proposed screening will be complementary to the existing dealership and will include a three-foot-high by 15-foot-wide vegetated berm along Centerra Way, which is more, I don't want to say aggressive, it's more robust than normal, and we believe that was important as there are single-family homes on the south side of Centerra Way. The existing vegetated wooded buffer, 25-foot wide wooded buffer along the western property line will also remain. There were three speakers at the planning commission public hearing. They noted concerns such as stress over the loss of a valuable outdoor recreation amenity. It's actually a unpermitted, but really well put together, what I'm told, BMX trail on this site. The applicant also heard opposition related to lighting, noise, use of the street as a loading zone, and they also, the applicant or the opposition did submit a petition with 18 more signatures noting their opposition. Despite the opposition, the planning commission recommends approval with a vote of nine to one, with an additional condition to emphasize the prohibition of using the right-of-way for offloading and onloading of vehicles for sale.
Mr. Bellucci?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
One is, could you describe the current zoning of this particular piece of property, and what could be developed there as a matter of right?
So the property is currently zoned B2 Community Business District. So it could have an office building, it could have a McDonald's with a drive-thru, it could have a doctor's office, it could have a nursery, it could have doggy daycare. So there are a lot of commercial, I'm sorry.
Tattoo parlor.
Tattoo parlor. But not without a use permit. So our analysis did indicate that many of these by-right uses would generate far more traffic on that Centerra Way than what is being proposed, which is a high-end car dealership that, from what I'm told, people are less impulsive in buying, and they're usually, they go to that dealership specifically when they start their day. It's not allowed to pass through impulse buying. That's what I'm told. So the other question is, do we really think a McDonald's would go there, or a 7-Eleven, There was a.
Well, I didn't ask that question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I think that members of the community fairly do have that question. So please continue.
So, there was a, an approved site plan for an office building on that property, and for whatever reason, it did not come to fruition. So that was, that's been several years now.
One concern that, um, has been raised with me by neighbors and members of the community is about preservation of trees. And, um, I'm an advocate for preserving trees, and I recognize the importance that trees have. And I, at the same time, though, I just want to be clear about what's within the city's portfolio of capabilities. In other words, because this property is zoned B-2, the current property owner or any purchaser of the property would have the right to develop that land and take down the trees that are currently there, no matter any decision made by this body. That's correct, right?
That is correct. I would add that there are tree replacement requirements for just about any development that has more than eleven parking spaces. So you'd get some tree replacement, but the point I was trying to make with the three-foot-high-by-fifteen-foot-wide vegetated buffer along Centerra Way, which is across the street from those residences, is that it will be more impactful than the minimum requirement of ten feet wide with, um, shrubs and trees that come back replanted after everything's been scraped and then they come back in. But the idea here is that they would preserve what's there in that, that existing space.
Thank you. Also of note is the matter of, um, loading and unloading cars in the public right-of-way. And it appears that we do have an issue with that, not only potentially on Centerra Way, but also at other locations, um, other car dealerships throughout, throughout our city. And one of the things that I've learned about that is that the trucking companies operate independently, and they're often subcontracted by the car manufacturers or distributors, or exactly how that works, I'm not sure. But what I'm getting at is, though, sometimes the message isn't delivered to the vehicle transporter that they're not able to load and unload their cars in the public right-of-way. I don't know if that's something that's unique to Virginia Beach, maybe you could share some light on that, but I'm bringing this up because we do, we do need to figure out a way to convey to not only the car dealerships, but as well the vehicle transporters that that practice, um, is not legal in the city of Virginia Beach.
Right, right. They do it on the Boulevard, too, you are correct.
And I've heard from car dealerships who have expressed frustration that sometimes the, they don't know what time the cars are going to arrive. Again, these are outside the scope of my area of expertise, I don't know exactly the inner workings of the business, but sometimes the vehicles arrive on the truck, and they don't know exactly when they're going to arrive, and they just pull up and start unloading. And I, and I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think as a city, we need to look into that, and I don't know if it's through the police department, or if it's through code enforcement, or if it's through some combination of all of that city administration. I think we need to clarify our policy on that with the car dealerships as well as those who transport the vehicles. But anyway, I'll save my other comments and questions for the hearing on December seventh, but I know that there's community interest in this application, and I want to, um, make sure that we're doing everything we can to satisfy the concerns of residents, and also make sure that the applicant has a fair and proper hearing. Thank you.
So, item number seven is a request for a conditional use permit for a three-bedroom short-term rental along Eighteenth Street at the Oceanfront. Since the driveway is shared by two units, units A and D, no parking on the driveway by the occupants of this unit is permitted. And as three parking spaces are required and only one can be accommodated within the existing two-car garage, they have leased two spaces off-site at three-thirty-five Virginia Beach Boulevard, which is just about five-hundred feet from this site. Three letters of support were provided, and these are from each of the unit owners within this multifamily building. There is no known opposition, and according to the host compliance website, this unit is not currently advertised, nor has it ever been rented as a short-term rental in the Item number eight was deferred by city council in October to this December seventh meeting. And to quickly refresh your memory, this is an application for alternative compliance for reoccurring outdoor events. So these events might include yard games, live music, fundraisers, movie nights, and watch parties. Proposed improvements include a stage with eight-foot-tall, noise-insulated walls. And the planning commission recommends approval, but subject to a condition that the number of special events be limited to just fifteen per year. Six letters of support were provided, and there was one speaker in opposition at both the planning commission, and you likely recall the city council meeting as well, who had very specific concerns about noise. And there was a good conversation about, about noise and how we might be able to deal with it. Since the deferral in October, the applicant has hired an attorney, and our staff has been speaking with her, and we hope that perhaps these conditions could be massaged a bit, or that she might have some other suggestions that will appease the folks in opposition, and we will have that information, or any new information, or suggestions that, that they might have for you before the December seventh meeting.
Vice Chair.
I'm sorry.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Uh, I, this was deferred, I believe, at my request.
Yes.
And I appreciate the work this planning commission staff is doing, apparently doing with the applicant on mitigating the noise issue. Could I inquire of the city attorney where we are on the proposed noise ordinance? I know the city attorney's out sick, and, uh, this, this was a target week for him at one point of trying to get something out before this came back up again.
I understand. Um, the noise ordinance has been, a revised noise ordinance has been drafted, it's been shared with city stakeholders. It's not ready to go on the agenda on the seventh, um, but, uh, I, I believe we'll be bringing it to you soon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
On that note, could I ask that at least the two council liaisons, where Mr. Tower and myself could have the benefit of seeing that, that would be great.
Yeah, Mr. Sales said that he would include us when, at the appropriate time, and I just assume we haven't, haven't gotten there yet.
He sent an email on Friday to the city staff saying, "Now's the last opportunity, because then we're going to the next level." So, it's coming.
Rod, you may not have seen an update. Mark and I talked yesterday, and Mark sent it to me and asked me if I was okay with, if I had any comments, that it was okay to send it over to the two council liaisons. So I do think Mark planned to send it today, or if not, some other time. So I think it's coming your, your way, respectfully.
Yeah, he, I have had a conversation with him, I know he knows I'm interested in trying to resolve this. I, I, I have, I don't want this particular application to be judged, uh, as being a hostage to a larger issue. On the other hand, it is certainly an appropriate application for us to focus on noise issues, I think, given the issues that were raised, at least that's my opinion. So I, I hope we can, I hope we can find a way to deal fairly with the application and not delay it unduly. On the other hand, I don't want this opportunity to pass to get a, a work in noise ordinance back in force in the city, because I think there are a number of people that are, would like to feel like we can protect ourselves, uh, from unreasonable noise intrusion when we need to.
So, while we have a little bit of a break right here, let me ask the council, we've got two more items on the seventh, and then we go to the fourteenth, and it's, the time is really getting late. Do we want to just sort of stop it when we finish the seventh, and we can finish this up at our next meeting? Would that be okay with everyone?
I have no objection to that.
What would it be?
We.
Would that be okay, Mr. Planning?
Vice Mayor, we shared it in the Friday package.
Well, I mean, right, we, we have it here, and.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't. Yeah, we don't have to brief again, yeah.
So if we could just.
Because, because the calendar for the seventh and the fourteen is pretty robust, anyway.
We'll just quickly finish up these last few items, and then, and I know staff and everyone would like to go home, and we've got Thanksgiving coming. Thank you, Carolyn.
And we, we flipped a coin to see who would do December seventh and who would do the fourteenth.
You're an excellent gambler. I just know your inner workings. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, goodness, okay, sorry. The next item is rather exciting. It's an amendment to the comprehensive plan to fulfill the components of the stormwater bond referendum that was passed by Virginia Beach voters, and also the corresponding resolution passed by the city council. The changes include that a preliminary stormwater study be provided for all rezonings, regardless of what watershed they are located in. Right now, it's discretionary actions that are primarily in the southern part of the city or in areas that have known flooding. So, this change would be just for rezonings, and it would not include other discretionary actions such as a conditional use permit. They would not be required to submit the preliminary stormwater study. The analysis must demonstrate that the proposed project has no impact or increase on the demand on public stormwater systems. And while this change might seem to increase the burden on applicants, it's really the, the devil is in the details of the implementation. So on the implementation side, the idea that's coming out of the Stormwater Regulation Work Group is that if an applicant voluntarily submits a proffer that states that they will abide by all state and local regulations, and that there will be no impacts upstream or downstream, then they would have the opportunity to proceed with a more simplistic or streamlined version of the stormwater management analysis. And that, of course, would still have to ensure that their facilities have been sized adequately. And on the flip side of that, if an applicant opted out of the voluntary proffer, then the applicant would need to demonstrate, um, perhaps through modeling, that they have no impact. So that would be a more detailed analysis of their stormwater. The requirements for these analyses are found in an internal policy, so the good news is that as the work group continues its work, it would not require any additional review from the city council in terms of a complan, comp plan amendment, or perhaps amendments to any city ordinances. So it can remain fluid until everybody's comfortable with it and, and we get it right. There was one speaker in opposition who expressed concern that if all rezonings throughout the city were required to submit a stormwater study, that it could lengthen the discretionary application process. The speaker encouraged changes that staff, changes that included staff having more ability to use discretion, and hopes that the work group finds a more balanced and less prohibitive approach. And while the planning commission believes in the concept and they support the idea, they voted eleven to zero to deny the resolution as they believe that additional input from stakeholders is warranted.
I'd just like to make one comment on that. Louis and I have been sitting in as the liaisons every Friday with, I think, the big, I'll call them the big players in the development community, and there was support for what was proposed in the resolution, because I think what people are missing is, if you take the Salem Woods example, that we rezoned for the forty acres, you may recall, with the R-two, whatever it was, R-15 or R-30, whatever it was, they had, they went through years, as I heard this guy talk about, all the work that they had to do to get that approved, because of all the stuff they had to do just to get to rezoning. And then, as they get towards the end, they find themselves having to make additional modifications, spending additional money. So what this does, they could have, if they picked option one, which says, "We're agreeing that whatever the staff at the end says we have to have when they do their real site plan for the real work," then they, but they're agreeing to do that, or otherwise it just gets denied, they get to forego spending all that time on money on work that's often fifty percent changed at the back end. So, really, this is an added burden. This is really putting more trust in the staff and taking out redundant effort that isn't used. And I think a lot of people didn't have an appreciation for that this was really a lessening of the burden, not an increase.
And I think that's a message we will definitely start getting out once things are more in the finalized stage.
I appreciate all the hard work you've done.
And, and really, I would love to take credit, but it's really been Bobby Tahan and, and Carrie Bookhold from the planning department, and then all the other folks on your work group, so, we thank, the staff thanks you for working to find a solution.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I would love to, at some point, get a briefing on what the work group is, is doing. Um, I mean, this is a, a huge issue. I read the planning commission comments, and, uh, obviously that causes me some concern that they feel like they haven't been part of this process. But, um, this is a really big issue, and I'm coming in late to the game. I, I wasn't here for the ordinance or the, uh, the resolution, but, uh, I sure would like to know a lot more than I do right now about the work that you all have done at some point, um, because I think we have to thread a needle here between protecting, you know, our flooding and all that sort of thing, but still allowing growth as a city. So I'm, I'm wondering where that needle is.
Yes, Mr. Tower.
Yeah, can I just ask, how will this get back to us ultimately? How and when?
Um, Vice Mayor, to the, um, council, there's a briefing scheduled either the seventh or the fourteenth. That's going to go over the work of, um, the work group, and also let you know where we're ending up before it's presented to you all for any kind of vote. So we do plan to brief the council. It's either the seventh or the fourteenth when we come back from, um.
Okay.
The short little holiday stint.
Okay, that's good.
The briefing is in, what is it?
And then one more item.
Fourteenth.
I'm sorry.
Standing between us and Thanksgiving.
Yeah, sorry. And this one's somewhat interesting, we don't see these that often. It's the last item on your December seventh agenda, and it will be an appeal of the historical review board's denial for a certificate of appropriateness for an addition on the front of the historic Nemo United Methodist Church. The certificate of appropriateness application contained four additions, an administrative office, a choir room, a fellowship hall, and a welcome center. And the historical review board worked with the applicant on design adjustments, and three of the four additions did receive a certificate of appropriateness. The historical review board requested redesign of the welcome center to be more consistent with the character of the district, and that it be relocated to not block the view of the iconic steeple and the front of the church. So the slide on the left is the church today, and then the slide on the right is the proposed welcome center in front of the church. The applicant chose not to relocate or redesign the welcome center, and based on that, the historic, the, uh, yeah, the historical review board denied the certificate of appropriateness specifically for the welcome center shown on the right. The board noted that the design is not in character with the district, the addition will negatively impact visibility of that iconic steeple, which is a character-defining feature of this historic building. The applicant has now appealed that denial to the city council, and that will be your final item on December seventh.
Well.
The same people that approve it.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, I just have a question, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Since it's my district.
Yes.
I, I think this is the first time we've ever had an appeal.
Yeah.
From this board. And, just in general, because I know there, there's a new, these design guidelines coming Somewhere along the way, historic preservation, I think this board, for many years, sort of functioned as. of functioned as a sort of a voluntary review of their proposals, but now it's become mandatory. And I'm not sure how we got here, because it's -- for all these years, I think it's sort of been a general review and not a required thing. But going forward, it looks like it's being more a required action for whatever the Review Board decides. And this is a big one. Most of them are smaller, but I just kind of wonder where in all of this, you know, we are fitting. Because, I mean, looking at just being on a historic register and so forth, there are no restrictions, but our issues have now become restrictions. And I want to make sure we're not conflicting there, because Historic Preservation, we don't want to discourage, but where is that line that we are going to make things mandatory rather than voluntary if you're going to preserve a historic structure?
Mm-hmm.
That's just a question that I have, because it sort of is a conflict. I hate for us to get to the point where people who own historic structures say, "Well, I can't afford to own a historic structure." At any rate, that, to me, is a basic thing as much as what is being proposed. And the other thing, I'll just say, we won't be getting a transcript of that.
You will be getting...
We will?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
They're detailed minutes.
Whether it would be a transcript or not.
So it'll be detailed minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
The last one that I can remember was that old shop called Worth the Weight that's over near the Francis Land House. There was a lot of conversation over the colors that they were using, and the Historical Review Board didn't like the colors, and so we had to override that. But that's the only one that I can remember.
Well, I mean, it's getting to be pretty in-depth. I mean, this one is a big thing, but I mean, I just noticed at the times that I have been listening that, you know, it gets to be pretty in-depth of what is approved and what isn't. And usually, it's the city that's the applicant, because it's a city building, so that doesn't get -- I mean, we've got deep pockets, we can afford anything. But a private individual, there's going to be a limit to what people can afford to do or be willing to do. And in a situation, you know, I mean, I can foresee a situation where somebody says, "Well, I can't afford to be historic," or "I don't want to be bound by the city's review." So how are we going to deal with that? Or maybe Mark's got a suggestion.
Third question.
Well, I would just say that the Historical Review Board and the historic districts are functioning the way they always have, and that is to review applications for certificate of appropriateness for additions, new construction, signs, demolitions in historic and cultural districts, which are a zoning overlay that have been created by City Council.
But with the owner's agreement to be in the district, right? Okay.
Generally, as far as I understand.
Because it wasn't thought to be mandatory. Okay.
Yeah. And so the certificate of appropriateness is required for property owner to get a permit to do their proposed project, whether it be an addition or new construction, demolition, or a sign. So I think that they have -- they're still -- they're operating the way they always have. It's at the local level in these historic districts where Historic Preservation really takes place, because it is where there are general protections for the character of these historic properties. You mentioned the registers. Yes, the registers are honorary, so a lot of people get it mixed up and think, "If you're on the National Register, then you have protections and restrictions." It's -- that's not the case. It's here at the local level in these local districts. And you also mentioned the design guidelines, and we hope to come to council soon with those. Here in Virginia Beach, the Historical Review Board has operated without design guidelines for their lifetime, and they were established in 1974. Design guidelines are useful for the property owner to know what the design requirements are within the district, and what's expected of them, and how they can plan their projects to maintain the historic character of their property. It's therefore their design professional, their architect or their builder, so they understand that as well when they're designing an addition or new construction, or even, you know, large-scale maintenance projects. It's there for staff to be able to review these projects and make sure that things are in line with the guidelines, and therefore the Review Board as well, so that their review can be consistent and objective and not subjective. And we've been -- a presentation to Planning Commission, we're going to go back to them shortly, and then we'll -- after the first of the year, we will be coming back to council with that as well. In 2016, Virginia Beach became a certified local government, which is a designation from the National Park Service, recognizing the Historic Preservation Program that we have, that we have all the components for a good program. And two of the most important things are, one, having a preservation ordinance in place, which we do. It's Article 13 of the zoning ordinance, and that then allows for a Historical Review Board. And then having design guidelines for those districts so that the -- so that there can be objective application of the intent, which is to maintain the historic character of the districts.
But it's extremely expensive to go to those extreme measures, and any property owner who is in a district needs to understand that these things are now being imposed, and it's going to be at their cost to meet these restrictions. And, you know, we just need to understand, you know, we thought we've now added a lot of development requirements for stormwater, but we've also done it for Historic Preservation. And it's extremely expensive to do it that way, rather than just do the best you can to maintain a historic property, and it's going to stand there. But if you've got to go to that nth degree to meet these requirements, it becomes very costly. And I think we're going to have to, well, heaven help the folks who are already in a historic district, but before we add any more, everybody needs to understand what it does to their property. And it's no longer no restriction, they're local government restrictions. And we need to understand that we're the ones who are putting those on there.
I would note that the guidelines are...
We'll address in the Friday package. If it wasn't a question, we'll address in the Friday.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm really concerned, but having to do an appeal is going to be interesting by a nonprofit.
Well, behalf of the mayor and the City Council, we want to wish everybody a wonderful, happy Thanksgiving and holiday. And next week is the fifth Tuesday, so we -- everybody gets a little bit of a break, and then we will come back to work hard on December 7th. It looks like we're going to have a very exciting meeting that day, so thank you, everyone.